Troy Dunn, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you, Troy. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is 2:30 PM on Tuesday, May 24th. If you'll all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Ingalls, do we have certification of today's agenda?
We do, Mr. Chair. Item 2A required mailed notice. That was accomplished on May 6th, 2022. Item 3A was properly noticed from a previous meeting and continued from April 26th until today. Finally, item 3B required published, signed, posted, and mailed notice. That was accomplished on April 28th, April 29th, and April 29th, respectively. With that, you have proper notice and jurisdiction on all three items.
Thank you, Mr. Ingalls. Do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move to item 2A in our land use meeting agenda items. 7745 Moore Road, major entertainment event. Project file EE 2022-001. Trevor Bedford from our Department of Community Development. Hi, Trevor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Trevor Bedford, representing Planning Services. The item before you today is a major entertainment event application for a series of events at Zuma's Rescue Ranch. The project number is EE 2022-001. The applicant is requesting approval of a major entertainment event for a series of events through the summer and the fall. And they will be listed on the following slides. This includes a concert series called Rock the Ranch, which will take place on June 11th, July 9th, and August 20th. There will be food, beverages, hayrides, and live music between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. And the maximum attendance for these events is expected to be about 400. Your packet may reference August 13th as the date for the final event of this series instead of August 20th. The 13th was the original date planned for the event, but the applicant has had a schedule change. But no other changes to that event are proposed. And they have already updated their dates on their liquor and fire permits. The next event is the Rock the Ranch Concert Final, which will take place on October 8th. This is similar to the concert series, but will take place from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This is also expected to attract up to 400 guests. Then we have Picnic with the Ponies. This is a family-centered event. There will be horse demos, crafts, games, face painting, hayrides, photos, and food and beverages from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM with a maximum attendance of about 300. Then we have the Halloween Trunk or Treat. This is a safe, family-centered event as a safe place to trick or treat. This will take place between 1:00 PM and 4:00 PM on October 29th with a maximum of 300 guests. Then the last event is the Christmas Market, which is a space for holiday shopping to support local businesses. There will be arts and crafts and hayrides for children. And this will take place from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM with a maximum of 400 guests. The intent of the major entertainment event process is to provide for orderly control of entertainment events. A major entertainment event is defined as a one-day event in excess of 500 persons or multi-day event in excess of seven days and 500 persons per day. Requests for major entertainment events are reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners. For the process, major entertainment events are reviewed by referral agencies and the public, after which mailed notice of the public meeting is sent to abutting landowners. Following the Board's decision on the application, entertainment events require additional work by the applicant to acquire permits, approvals, licenses, and other inspections set forth in the conditions of approval. The events cannot commence until those items are finalized. For the location of this proposal, the site is located approximately one mile south of the intersection of Moore Road and Waterton Road. It is generally bounded by agricultural properties, unplanted land, and industrial uses. This is an aerial view of the property. The events will take place on the parcel outlined in red, generally in the northeast portion of that property. Parking will be on the adjacent property to the north that is also owned by the applicants. This property is highlighted in yellow. For some background, the Zuma's Rescue Ranch is in equine rescue center with an approved use by special review for horse boarding. In 2019, the site hosted the Big Can Jam, which is a similarly sized event. It was a craft beer festival with live music. Since this was a one-day event, it was able to be approved as a minor entertainment event. This slide lists the approval standards for a major entertainment event. Staff's assessment of these standards are discussed in detail within the staff report. We do have some proposed conditions. Staff has evaluated the application in accordance with Section 22B of the Douglas County zoning resolution. No residents have expressed concerns with these events. Traffic control for the event will be accomplished with onsite volunteers directing traffic to the parking. The applicant provided a report indicating that no offsite traffic control should be necessary. Should the Board find that the approval standards for the major entertainment event is met, the following proposed conditions should be considered for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, the major entertainment event permit is approved for events for the following dates, times, including setup and teardown and maximum attendance levels. Rock the Ranch, June 11th, July 9th, and August 20th from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM with 400 guests per event. Picnic with the Ponies, September 10th, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM with 300 guests. Rock the Ranch, October 8th, from 1:00 PM to 9:00 PM with 400 guests. Halloween Trunk or Treat, October 29th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM with 300 guests. Christmas Market, December 3rd, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM with 400 guests. Condition number two, prior to final event permit issuance, the applicant shall provide evidence that all South Metro Fire inspections have been completed. Condition number three, prior to event permit issuance, any required building permits shall be obtained by the applicant, and the applicant shall provide onsite inspections as required by Douglas County Building Division. Condition number four, prior to final event permit issuance, copies of valid retail food establishment licenses for all vendors shall be provided to Douglas County and Tri-County Health Department. Condition five, prior to final event permit issuance, the applicant shall obtain a special event permit from the Douglas County Liquor Licensing Authority. Condition six, the event shall not commence until the final event permit has been issued. Planning Services shall issue the final event permit when the applicant has demonstrated that all other conditions of approval have been met. Condition seven, the applicant shall revegetate the event parking area at the conclusion of the event season if warranted based on inspections by Public Works Engineering Staff. And finally, condition eight, all commitments and promises made by the applicant and/or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Major entertainment events shall be approved with conditions continued, tabled for further study, or denied by the Board of County Commissioners at a public meeting. The Board shall evaluate the entertainment request, staff report, applicant responses, and public comment and testimony. The Board's actions shall be based on evidence presented, compliance with adopted county standards, regulations, and policies, and other guidelines. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions regarding the staff report. Otherwise, the applicant should be Jody Messinech and Cece Frick should be available to answer any questions.
Trevor, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for Trevor?
I have none, thank you.
And I have a couple, but I'll reserve those following the applicant's presentation. So with that, let's welcome up the applicant to prepare to provide their application presentation. And you can actually just come to the middle podium if you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Charlene Frick. And the business address is 7745 North Moore Road, Little Sinclair, 80125. Basically, we have the supporting documents as listed. All of the conditions have been met. We have the South Metro Fire Rescue permitted, liquor permitted. We've spoken with Tri-County Health. They have no concerns. And anything else already presented.
Thank you. Is that your presentation?
I mean, it's essentially all the same.
Okay. So of the eight conditions that staff shared with us, how many of those have you already satisfied?
All of them.
Okay. Let me just confirm with Trevor. Have all the conditions been satisfied already?
Well, we will still need to have the fire inspections prior to each event, so that will need to be done. And let me just take one quick look back at these. So yes, number two, I have seen the permits from the South Metro Fire have been issued. They will just need to complete their inspections. So that's not something they could have done by today. That will have to be done usually just like a day or two before the event. They will not need any building permits. That is kind of just a standard comment. And we will need to see the valid food establishment licenses. So I haven't seen that yet. They may already have those. But that's just something that they'll just need to give us a copy of. That's typically taken care of between now and the events.
Okay. So Ms., and I'm sorry, you said Charlene. What was your last name?
Frick, F-R-I-C-K.
F-R-I-C-K. So Ms. Frick, does the applicant agree to all of the eight conditions presented by staff?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the food permitting. And if we get any more food trucks, we will get those in advance of the event.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Frick. Any questions for the applicant?
So you don't have a liquor license yet, do you?
We do. For all of the events.
Did you come before us to get that?
It's through Douglas County, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I don't remember that. Do you guys?
I don't have a recollection of you appearing before us. We're also the liquor authority. We occupy a lot of different roles here at the county.
I can provide you with the permits.
Okay. And maybe Trevor has additional information?
Sure. You know, I'm not involved in the liquor license processing, but I did see their copies of the liquor licenses. I believe since it was just for special events, it may have just been an administrative process.
Oh, I see.
I do know that they did have to post the property, and they did accomplish that.
Okay. Additional questions from the Board for the applicant or staff?
I do have one other question. Have you done events like this before, either here or at other venues?
We've organically grown. So we have done private events at our facility for ongoing volunteers and donors that are similar, except for in capacity. So we have put 400 maximum, just in case it grows to that. And it also is comfortable with our own capacity. So we've had about 40 to 50 volunteers and donors onsite, such as Big Can Jam, that kind of thing. And so this is something we would do specific for these events for the first time, given the capacity as a major event.
And this is fundraising for Zuma's Ranch?
Yes. And so the funding will help provide support to our programs for our horse rescue and then also mental health programs for children.
Do you do mental health with animals? Is it an equine therapy program?
Yes. So it's animal-assisted learning and therapy.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yes.
Further questions or comments for the applicant from the Board? You know, just maybe a couple of additional comments or questions. I know that Section 2201B states that the intent of the process is to provide for the orderly control of entertainment events. It sounds like you're satisfying or will satisfy all of the eight conditions as presented. I think we're always thrilled to see people use their private property as they see fit, provided they're not impairing the interests of other citizens in our community. I'm not seeing anything in the packet that would give me pause on that level. But certainly always interested to hear about the nonprofits in our community. Do you have any additional information about your organization? Is it a 501(c)(3)?
We are a 501(c)(3). Jody Messinech is our founder. And she started in 2004 rescuing animals. And in 2008, we became an incorporated 501(c)(3) where we started with the equine therapy at that point as well. So we receive about 65 individuals per week for mental health therapy. We actually get children referred to us from Douglas County Crisis Response Team as well as other nonprofits. And then we do horse rescue. So we have about 65 animals onsite and others that we rescue out of state that we do not have onsite.
Wow. Well, you're to be commended. What an amazing operation. I know this Board is deeply concerned with mental health.
We took volunteers.
And volunteers, I know.
We took volunteers.
Yeah. We'd be pleased to come out and spend some time with you all. It sounds like a lot of fun, too. So just out of curiosity, what percentage of the revenues generated from the events go to the nonprofit?
So we have sponsors that help underwrite the event. So anything above that will be proceeds. And our event is about $2,000 at most in expense. And so we see 100% of that going back to programs.
100%. Wow. Well, that's incredible. Those are all the questions that I have. Anything else from the Board? I don't think we do. With that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment, either in the room or online. Is there any citizen comment?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it please the Board, I have a motion to approve 77 Moore Road, major entertainment event. Because it does meet all approval criteria with eight conditions as presented, project file is EE 2022-001.
Second.
There's a first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And good luck. You bet. So with that, we'll move from item two to item three, our public hearing agenda item. The first is item 3A, Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment, project file ZR 2021-033. Brett Thomas, Chief Planner, presenting from staff. Hi, Brett.
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment, ZR 2021-033. The applicant has requested a continuance of the hearing on this application to June 14th, 2022, at 2:30 PM.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Board?
No.
None.
Okay. And I don't have any either. Any citizen comment on this item? And we do have a citizen comment. Yes, sir.
Hello. I am Ryan Parker. Live at 1244 Burgano Trail in Castle Pines, Colorado. First of all, thank you for all you do, Commissioners. You've done an amazing job over the last couple of years with all the things we've got going on. I was here about three years ago presenting, kind of on the same token with Sterling Ranch and other communities like Sterling Ranch, who've been committed to sustainability, which is pretty awesome. So thank you, Sterling Ranch, for working towards that. But I want to approach something to you that I think has maybe fallen by the wayside, and that deals with our commitment to dark skies in Colorado. As you guys know, I'm kind of like the Lorax. If you have kids or grandkids, you know he speaks. And I speak for the trees and the bees and the Coloradans and the natural night landscapes. And here I stand before you asking you to reconsider the sustainability and growth combined in Colorado. As you see, we've got this exponential growth happening in Douglas County. But due to the argument that you Commissioners have made in the past towards public personal property rights, when I encourage you to amend the current zoning regulations and lighting codes to include residential streetlights, I was told that, well, you don't want to infringe upon the personal property rights of folks. But at the same token, we already have building codes for the public safety and health of the community. So I would just ask that you would consider, with more people moving here, more of Colorado changing with extra light pollution. Light pollution is growing by 2% more every year. That Douglas County, we do more, we do better to reduce that light pollution through fully shielded outdoor light fixtures. And the biggest issue is there's no enforcement. There's nobody that enforces that. And so I'm proposing a solution to Douglas County by creating a task force of volunteers to encourage shielded lights, residential, commercial. So I'm just putting that out there. But also with Sterling Ranch, as a kind of a poster child, they've done an amazing job with their shielded lights. So basically, dark skies don't mean dark ground. If you have shielded lights throughout Colorado, people can do whatever they want on their property, like you promoted, without bothering their neighbors. And that's the biggest thing here. Not bothering human nature's neighbors or their natural neighbors. So based upon that, the solution I'm just... The ask is for you to consider doing a study session. And then I would offer to create a Good Neighbor Lighting Volunteer Task Force for Douglas County to help enforce this, but also provide the much-needed resource to encourage a better way to, I guess, preserve Colorado's natural nights and landscapes for future generations. So based upon that, that's why I touched on Sterling Ranch, because they've done a lot of great things, right? The only thing they could still work on, though, with your help, are those darned streetlights. It's like a runway for alien spaceships. So consider that. Thanks for your time. And if you want to reach out to me, let me know. Thank you much.
Mr. Parker, thank you very much. It's good to see you. Mr. Ingalls, any issue or concern about citizen comment as it relates to items on the agenda that are being considered for continuation?
You can accept citizen comment if you want to act on those comments. Without the input from the developer, you might want to consider hearing from them first.
Okay. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no additional online comment.
Okay. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to continue the Sterling Ranch Plan Development, Fifth Amendment, project file ZR 2021-033, till June 14th, 2022, at 2:30 PM.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? I'll just make a comment that our meetings are in the middle of the day. And I know that's sometimes difficult for citizens in our community to engage. I don't want to speak specifically to this application or this agenda item, but I certainly am pleased to see Mr. Parker and other members of our community show up, sacrifice their time, to do something that they care about. And I appreciate and recognize the quote from the Lorax that unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's just not. So thanks for coming out for our issues that are before us, even though sometimes they do get continued. So there's a first and second on the floor. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that'll be continued to June 14th, 2022, where additional citizen comment will be accepted. With that, we'll move to item 3B, which is 15600 Southeast Cherry Creek Road, Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic, project file US 2021-005. Matt Jacobowski for staff. Hi, Matt.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Matt Jacobowski, representing Planning Services. The applicant is proposing a use by special review for an equine veterinary clinic at 15600 Southeast Cherry Creek Road. The project number is US 2021-005. Dr. Lisa Anderson is here on behalf of the Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic. The proposed equine vet clinic is for general care. No expansion of structures is proposed, and no horse patients will be turned out to pasture. The intent of the USR process, as set forth in Section 21 of the zoning resolution, is to provide for uses in specific zoning districts that shall require a public notice and hearing and the approval of the Board of County Commissioners, subject to such conditions and safeguards as may be imposed by the Board. The use by special review process begins with the dismissal of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies and the public... Notice is given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Referral comments received were standard in nature, generally regarding permits required for the operation of the use. Per comments from the State Division of Water, the applicant obtained a court-decreed water augmentation plan in February 2022 and re-permitted its well in March 2022 to allow for the proposed veterinary clinic use. The State Division of Water had no additional objections to the proposal once the court decree and the well permit were issued. Comments were also received from abutting property owners and nearby residents during the process. All public comments and the applicant's response to those comments are included in the staff report. Staff did receive some additional comments that were not included in the staff report that were provided to the Board prior to today's hearing. One nearby resident of the comments received expressed some concern regarding the nature and the extent of the use. The Planning Commission heard the request at its May 16th, 2022, public hearing and recommended approval by a vote of 5 to 0. Three members of the public spoke at the Planning Commission hearing. Two neighbors spoke in support of the application. The one neighbor who submitted comments that I just briefly discussed now had the same question about the extent and intent of the use. But staff was able to provide a response to those questions. And at the hearing, the neighbor indicated that the questions were sufficiently answered to his liking. The site, highlighted in blue, is Zoned Agricultural 1, or A1, and is located near the El Paso County and Albert County border in southeast Douglas County. So almost right in the corner here being the El Paso County line and the Albert County line. Zooming in on this aerial, the site is located at the intersection of southeast Cherry Creek Road and east Palmer Divide Avenue. Access occurs from a driveway at east Cherry Creek Road. The applicant has proposed a 2.8-acre USR permit area, as highlighted by the black dash. That area encapsulates the proposed vet clinic and the facilities to be used for the vet clinic. East Cherry Creek Road, or sorry, East Cherry Creek does bisect the property in the southeast corner of the site, but no 100-year FEMA floodplain is present. The property was zoned agricultural with the inception of zoning in Douglas County in 1955. This is consistent with the historic agricultural and animal-related use of the property. Existing facilities were constructed in 1998. Here's another overview of the site, again showing the USR permit area Here's another overview of the site, again showing the USR permit area and showing the 100-foot setback that's met per the USR requirements. This slide shows the facilities to be used for the proposal. No new structures are proposed, and no expansion of structures are proposed. The only improvement is that the applicant desires to provide gravel to connect the existing driveway loop, so trailers would not need to do a complicated maneuver to back up and go out. They'd be able to just circulate around, which would improve traffic flow. I also should note that there is an existing residence in this location adjacent to the proposed clinic, but that is not part of the USR and would not be used for any activities related to the clinic. Facilities include stalls within the clinic, runs that are connected to the stalls, parking area, an indoor riding arena, an outdoor arena, and at the end of the driveway access from east Cherry Creek Road is a manure trash container, which is hauled off once per week and is fully enclosed so that the nuisance effects of manure would not be a concern. No horses would be allowed to graze anywhere on the site. They're contained within the clinic, the runs, or in some cases, as Dr. Anderson will provide in the presentation to follow, a horse would be able to pull up at a trailer and perhaps a vaccination could be given right within the trailer or in the parking In addition to a USR site plan, a management plan is required. This is located on Sheet 1 of the USR exhibit. This lays out the operational details and limitations required as part of the USR. These limitations are also described within Page 5 of the staff report. Following our site photos, this is a view looking at the site entrance from east Cherry Creek Road. So, the clinic building would be visible here, although that actually might be the residence, not part of the use-by-special review. This view looks at the site from west to east, so clinic building here and riding arena here. This view looks at the clinic from the south, clinic building here on the right side. The dashed area shows the existing residence, which is not a part of the USR. And here is the parking area for clients, which is adjacent to the outdoor runs. The approval standards for use-by-special review requests are set forth in Section 21 and listed here. Staff's assessment of the approval standards is discussed in detail within Pages 8 to 10 of the staff report. Staff has evaluated the use-by-special review request in accordance with Section 21 of the zoning resolution. Should the Board find that the approval standards have been met, the following conditions are proposed for inclusion in the motion. Condition number one, prior to final approval of the record copy of the USR plan exhibit, any necessary technical corrections shall be made to the satisfaction of Douglas County. And condition number two, all commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public hearing and/or agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon by the Board of County Commissioners in approving the application. Therefore, such approval is conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 2109.09 of the zoning resolution sets forth the parameters for the Board's recommendation of USR requests and their determination of such request. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available to take questions on the staff report if the Board wishes. Otherwise, Dr. Lise Anderson is here as representative of Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for staff?
Matt, I do have one question. The packet talks over and over about horses that belong to clients or customers cannot be used, cannot go into the pasture. Is that because the pasture is not part of the USR footprint, or is there another reason?
Well, the USR footprint is the applicant's choice, based on how the operation would go. So, the way I understand it is it's not necessary for horses to go to pasture, and in some cases, because they may be injured or have a cut or something, they wouldn't really want them to go to pasture either, so they can control them and make sure to keep them safe. But Dr. Anderson might be able to explain a little bit more detail as well.
I planned to ask her, but I wanted to ask you in case there was some legal reason why they couldn't, according to the USR.
Correct. There is no reason aside from that's the proposal of the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Sure.
Further questions for staff?
Yeah. Hey, so Matt, I mean, this is a agricultural use. I mean, I guess to a layman like me, veterinarian services seems pretty agricultural, and this is A1 zoning. Can you take us through why this is set to a use-by-special review?
Sure. Matt Jacobowski for staff. The use-by-special review list of uses in any zone district are uses that are essentially a permitted use but have certain other aspects that might need some additional review. And the reason why we would want to make sure there's some additional review in this case is because there could be some review of traffic that we might want to make sure is reviewed. There's, of course, the considerations of where does the manure go, how are pastures potentially being used or not. And because the use becomes something that has a little bit of a commercial nature to it, which is more than a home occupation, we have it in our use-by-special review as a use to have a little more consideration. But I completely understand your thoughts in that this is an agricultural area. Folks have horses. You can board horses. And so, it makes a lot of sense that you would have a vet clinic to provide good care for folks that have horses and that have that lifestyle. But I suppose, just as with boarded horses, there is a certain limit where a use-by-special review could be in effect for boarded horses as well. And so, that's kind of the distinction there.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
So, Matt, I think you probably stated this, and I saw it referenced in the packet around the Planning Commission hearing on the 16th. What was the final vote?
The vote was a recommendation of five to zero.
Five to zero to approve?
To approve.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no further questions for staff, we can proceed with the applicant's presentation. Hi. And if you just want to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Lise Anderson. My home address is 15380 East Cherry Creek Road. I live next door to the clinic, the potential hopeful clinic. And thank you very much for listening to me today. Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic, this is Ms. Ellie on the left. That's our teaching horse that we, that lives at the clinic. And then on the right is a cherry, is a crabapple tree, because we're trying to re-establish the vegetation on the area. And we planted about 20 trees since I purchased the property about a year ago. The history of Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic, or RMEC, the founder was Dr. Jack Galt back in the early 1980s. He started his practice in Colorado Springs. He moved it to Monument, again doing all equine. I joined him after graduating from Colorado State University in 2001, and then he retired, and I purchased the practice from him in 2006, and then moved into the Black Forest area, where we've been ever since, in El Paso County. I got the opportunity, and this was the old building there, so not nearly as fancy as what I've been able to purchase here in Douglas County. And then, so, I got the opportunity to go ahead and purchase the existing buildings that we have, and we would like to use that as the new proposed Rocky Mountain Equine We're primarily an ambulatory practice. We have three doc, soon-to-be three doctors, Dr. Cavalcante, who's been with me for about five years, myself, I'm the owner, and then Dr. Geeky will be joining us in June 2022. And then we have Wadsworth, our clinic cat. We are, again, mostly ambulatory. This is a equine veterinary truck where we carry most of our drugs. It's got a refrigerator and water. So, again, we go most of the time to the farms. All of our equipment is portable, just to throw that in there. The rest of the pictures are going to be a lot of pictures of our clients that we serve. Our practice goal as veterinarians is to continue a high-quality equine medicine and exceptional client service to the areas of Douglas County, El Paso County, and Albert, and have a very prompt emergency basis. We only want to travel about 25 miles from the clinic so that we can be available to our clients. We're not traveling from Pueblo to Denver. And then to provide a haul-in facility, and that's what we're applying for, so that we can have patients haul in. When they haul in, what that means is they put their horses in a trailer, pull them into our clinic, and then we service and take care of the animals there. And then sometimes they will have an overnight ability to stay. Practice goals for the community. Since I've been working here in this area for close to over 20 years, I partake in going to Walford Elementary in Black Forest to talk to the children, gone ahead and gone up to Douglas County High School to talk to the equine science community or the classes. Like I said, I've already planted about 20 trees so far. We're resting the pastures because the previous owners, they had 15 horses. This was a train, horse-training facility, so it's kind of, in a way, built to be a vet clinic. And so, they had 15 horses there that were their own personal horses, and they ended up moving, but they had overgrazed their area. We want to be a low-impact business to our agricultural neighbors. We have cattle on both sides. We have sheep to the north. It's a very agricultural environment. And then we just want to continue a high-quality, easily-accessible building and our ambulatory services to the local area. We have a very diverse clientele supporting the equine industry in Colorado. We go from having hunter jumpers to cutting horses, raining horses, to our very fancy long-year mules, to racehorses that go up to Arapahoe County, and then we have horses that go up to the Colorado Horse Park. And then we have, of course, our backyard horses that are just owned for a lot of pets or rescued horses, so. Okay. So, to go over typical cases that we see, we do vaccines, we do deworming, so basically preventative medicine. We do health checks for horses that are traveling out of the state. If there is an outbreak, which we've had here, you know, off and on throughout the years, we participate with a state veterinarian. And then we also do microchipping, which has become very popular because of all of our forest fires, for evacuation identification. We do equine dentistry, and everything I'm going to be showing you is equipment and procedures that we can do ambulatory. So, equine dentistry, we go out and we take care of the horse's teeth. We can do extractions. We do not do, we don't do major surgeries on them. Those get referred. Other typical cases are lameness evaluations. They always say no foot, no horse, so we have to make sure that the horses are sound when they move. Here, we're in a facility that has an indoor arena, and we're just watching the horse's movement. A lot of time, lameness exams go on to where we take x-rays, and then we can also do ultrasound. Again, all portable equipment. We have a digital x-ray machine, and there we have a little horse looking at his own x-ray. So, we took that opportunity. It was pretty cute. It's like, what did you do, doc? And then wounds. Wounds happen all the time. They run through fences. They get hurt. They get kicked. So, we'll have some small wounds. We go out to the fields. We also go ahead and suture them. They often then lead on to being bandaged or other further treatment. Sometimes these are horses that do come into the clinic and stay for a couple days, so that would be a typical case. We do ophthalmology, where we go out and look at their eyes. And if you guys still remember Gary Larson from the Far Side, equine medicines come a long ways from broken legs. Shoot them. Eye infections, shoot them. So, we don't shoot them anymore, or at least we try not to. Typical routine cases are also field castrations. Most of those, we do go to the clinic, we do go to the owner's pieces of property, go to their ranches and just do the castrations out in the field. This is a castration that I just did about a month ago in Douglas County. More complicated surgeries are referred off to a surgical facility. We also have a three-and-a-half-meter gastro scope that we can go ahead and scope horses' stomachs to see if they have ulcers. Again, very portable. Typical cases for, like, emergencies are going to be colic. Colic is basically any type of abdominal discomfort. Most colics, 93% of colics are resolved out in the field, being medically. We go out and we treat them. We get them over their little bellyache, and then no issues. But then there's 7% that need to come in and go to surgery. We don't do the colic surgeries. We will bring in horses, though, for IV fluids into our proposed clinic. And this here is a picture here of a horse that would be hooked up to IV fluids, and that's what some of the stalls that we have will be being utilized for. What Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic is not, we are not doing colic surgeries. This is a very intensive situation here. This is not what we're going to be performing. This horse is hooked up to gas anesthesia, turned upside down to get his belly basically cut open, so they can put everything back where it's supposed to be. This is not us. We also don't do orthopedic surgeries. We do not have an MRI. We do not have a CT scan. Infectious diseases or infectious horses, if we identify them early enough, we do route them away to a surgical facility that have better facilities than what we have to help with the infectious processes. So, these cases here are referred up to 50 miles away, up to Littleton Equine Medical Center, or they can go get sent up to Rock, or get sent up to Colorado State University up in Fort Collins, about two and a half hours away. And then the remaining pieces, the remaining of the approximately 40 acres will remain agricultural A1. I have an agricultural interest where there's a haymeadow on the property. That's just an extension of what I own next door. And then I also produce sheep for wool and meat consumption, and I sell lovely lamb, if anybody's ever interested. And we also sell goat, which is very delicious and one of the healthiest meats you're ever going to eat. And thank you for your time and consideration for letting us move from El Paso County into the beautiful Douglas County. So, thank you. Any questions?
Well said, Dr. Anderson. I certainly appreciate that comprehensive presentation to us and the fact that you went to CSU.
Yes.
Go Rams, doctor. That's great. Any questions for our applicant?
I do have some. Dr. Anderson, thank you for being here, and thank you for being so personal about this topic. I can tell how passionate you are about this.
Thank you.
The question I asked is about why does your report say that your clients or your customers' animals will not be in your pasture?
So, the pasture's been grossly overgrazed, and when we have horses that come in, we're not rehabilitating them. We're not keeping them there longer than we need to. So, they are, they have access to the stalls where we keep them in, and then they have access to the outdoor runs, which are on the east side of the building, so they're not visible from east Cherry Creek Road. It's a liability when we take those horses and turn them out into a pasture, because sometimes those horses are there in the first place because they already ran through a fence, and so we don't want to encourage that. So, they're there to be treated and moved on, and then moved back home. We're not a boarding facility.
Perfect. Thank you. My only other question is, in the packet, there was a letter with several concerns from neighbors Dan and Nancy Stig. And I know Eric said that these were answered at the Planning Commission, but I just want to ask you, do you think you've resolved these?
Well, those questions there, the first one was due to the water permit, and that was addressed by the water district people. So, that was addressed. As far as running a boarding kennel out of there, there's nothing mentioned anywhere in our discussion that we're going to be running a dog boarding kennel. There's, we're an equine facility, so we're not going to be treating dogs and cats. And as far as the sheep go, the sheep belong on the agricultural portion of the 39 acres, so.
Thank you, doctor. I am going to ask Eric, I'm sorry, Matt. Matt Jacobowski, I'm so sorry I called you Eric. I know you're Matthew. Did you say that these questions had been answered at the Planning Commission?
Matt Jacobowski for staff. These questions were submitted with the responses I provided to Mr. Stigie in the red text. The Planning Commission reviewed that and did not have any follow-up questions. Mr. Stigie also appeared before the Planning Commission and indicated that he had his questions answered at that time by reviewing the responses that were provided.
Okay. I have no other questions. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the Board for the applicant?
No, sir.
And I don't have any questions either. Thank you very much for that. So, with that, I will open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online regarding this item? Yes, ma'am. And if you want to just state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, please.
I am Sue Badgett, 1504 Alamo Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Dr. Anderson, Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic, has been my veterinarian for 20 years, and at no time during that 20 years with some very serious problems with my horses have I ever had to take them to her. She's always come to us. And I remember in, at my barn, which is the U.S. Air Force Academy, that's where I board, there was an extremely sick horse four years ago on Christmas Day, and Dr. Anderson's associate, Dr. Cavalcante, was there Christmas Day in the morning till well before, well, it was probably, it was night fond and dark by the time she left. That is how they operate. They, as she said, they're ambulatory. They don't create a lot of noise or congestion, and I think that's something people were concerned about. I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badgett. And thank you for traveling up from Colorado Springs. Really appreciate that.
Well, she travels to us all the time.
That's what it's, a vet that makes house calls. That's really special. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Is there any additional citizen comment in the room? Yes, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is David Cherry. I live at 15435 East Cherry Creek Road, right across from Dr. Anderson, and I just want to pledge my support for what she's trying to do in southeast Douglas County. I think it will be a huge benefit for us from the agricultural side of things. I, as a horse owner myself, would love the ability to haul a horse in for treatment I, as a horse owner myself, would love the ability to haul a horse in for treatment to maybe save on a farm call, as an example. So in general terms, I just think it'd be a great opportunity for her and her business as well as southeast Douglas County. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Thank you for being with us today. Any other comment today?
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Sina Balch, and as you can see from my attire, I am a rural veterinarian. I just wanted to say that I live at 10245 Jones Road, so just down the road from Dr. Anderson. She's been a colleague and friend of mine for years. And as two professionals that work in a practice setting that is quickly disappearing from the United States landscape, I strongly recommend any support we can give to rural veterinarians. If you talk to the AVMA, they will tell you that there is a deficit of rural veterinarians across the United States, especially in the western United States. And any time that we have a chance to support a practice that is both trying to benefit their own clients as well as the area around them, I would simply highly recommend and suggest that we do our best to make it possible for them to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Balch.
Doctor, can I ask you for your name again, please?
Sina Balch, S-I-G-N-E-B-A-L-C-H.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it, doc.
Any additional comment?
Hi. My name is Margaret Cole, C-O-L-E, and I am a neighbor, a client, and friend of Dr. Anderson. I live at 15220 East Cherry Creek. And I also think that having this clinic in the southeast corner of Douglas County will be a great addition. I've been using Rocky Mountain Equines since the 1990s, and so Dr. Anderson has been my primary veterinarian for 20 years now. And I can't say enough, if you have a true emergency, having a veterinarian that will come as soon as possible, regardless of the cost, is invaluable. I've myself had an emergency. It was on a Sunday. It was Easter Sunday, and it was at night. And she was there with, you know, within 10 or 15 minutes. So it's a great, a great facility to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment in the room? Troy, do we have any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Well, personally, I think I went 20, 30 years in my life without actually hearing from an actual large animal veterinarian, and I'm finding myself on day five of hearing from three in rapid succession. So first of all, doctor, thank you so much for bringing your practice here to Douglas County. I can assure you, this is a community that will value your practice here. Obviously, you are a resident here prior to, and I would like to get your card because I think my wife would like to take a look at some of your wool. And I myself, you know, lamb chops are one of my favorite meals. So I definitely would like to get your card. But I guess I'm just, and it was my comments, Matt got to hear this the other day, of, you know, here we have before us a decision to allow an agricultural use in an agricultural area, and the first thing in my mind that came up was in Douglas County, why in the world are we asking you to fill out a form on March 5, 2001, and appear before us in May 2022, when it's obvious you're providing a valuable agricultural service in an agricultural area of the county? So Matt, I wonder if you would not mind taking a note for Mr. Quinn? I would like an opportunity to bring forward before the board for a work session, an opportunity to review the zoning regulations that resulted in this specific use by special review, with the intent, colleagues, of actually eliminating the need for a, it sounds like perfectly qualified practitioner of veterinary medicine from having to fill out a form on March 5 and then appear before us on May of the following year for sake of giving the okay to something that it sounds like we're okay with anyhow.
Well, let me just speak to that. I support my friend and colleague's comments. I think Commissioner Teal is not only strong on his review of applications but looking at systems and ways to make them better, consistent with our philosophies here in Douglas County. So I would support that and would ask staff to bring that forward in a work session if we can streamline the process for our agricultural residents. As an item, I just wanted to ensure from the applicant that the two conditions as presented are acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that, and I'll bring you back to the board.
Thank you, Chair. Without further comment, and if it does please the board, I do have a motion to approve a use by special review at 15600 Southeast Cherry Creek Road for the Rocky Mountain Equine Clinic, because it does meet all the approval criteria with two conditions as presented. Project file is US 2021-005.
Second.
There's a first and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you all for being here. With that, we will adjourn our land use and public hearing for today. The next land use meeting and public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 14, 2022, at 2:30 PM. Thank you very much.
So obviously, doctor, you have a good practice, because I can't think of another use by special review we've had.